Okay. We're now back on agenda with the application of Ram Island Yacht Club. Okay, Keith, your presentation, please.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. The, I'm Keith Nielsen from Daco Incorporated, and I've prepared the application and the drawings that you have for you tonight. This project is for the overlay of the parking area at the Ram Island Yacht Club. The sole purpose of this project is to take badly deteriorated, overstressed pavement, and make a new parking lot surface, recycling the existing material, but also incorporating a four-inch overlay over the recompacted, regraded existing material. The way that will be done is by pulverizing the existing pavement, and then regrading the pulverized mixture of soil and crushed and ground-up asphalt and aggregate base that exists on the site, establishing some rough grading, fine grading that material, and then compacting it and overlaying it with asphalt. The asphalt will be done in two courses, a two-and-a-half-inch base and an inch-and-a-half surface course. Those are compacted thicknesses. The drawings that we've prepared are, consist of two sheets. Sheet number one is a basic definition of the site and coastal resources, and starting off with the notes that I've highlighted in your attachment, which you should have as a PDF form. And do you have that?
Yes, we all got that as a PDF.
Okay, great.
And before you keep going a minute, Keith, this is gonna seem like an arcane little stupid thing that chairmans have to do, but chairman have to do, but I do have to do it. Dana and Blake, to recuse, technically, you're supposed to leave the meeting. Don't click "leave the meeting," but go somewhere and, you know, look at the view and, and come back because you're not supposed to stay in the room.
All right, Keith, can I just, I, I'm representing the applicant also.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's right, because you're an officer. Okay, so.
I'll do whatever you want me to do, I'm just saying.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to be faithful to the process. Normally, under a recusal, even people have left the, the meeting room at the firehouse and stood in the doorway. I mean, it's, that's why I say it's kind of arcane, but. Dana, you were raising two, wanna, yeah, backing off. Okay, so Blake, as a, as a recused member, but a part of the application package because of your, the commodore of the yacht club, I guess you stay in, so. Okay, sorry, Keith, please continue.
Okay, sure. The, the drawings that we've prepared, sheet one shows existing conditions, and I've put various labels on there so that everybody could see what I was talking about. Label 1A is over toward the right-hand edge of the page, and that has a project description for you to refer to. 1B is basically the existing paving, paved parking lot that is going to be refurbished in this process. 1C shows the erosion and sediment controls that are to be installed before the project begins, and those details are over in 1D, a little bit further to the right. You'll see that there are two different types. One is a turbidity curtain held down in place with sandbags, and the other is a typical silt fence throughout the turfed area. Now, we really don't envision that these silt fences, the silt fence installation is going to be stressed in this project because the grass ground where they're located is higher than the paved edge, and the grass will be peeling most of the soil, intercepting if there is in. Going on around the page, the erosion and sediment controls are, are set forth immediately adjacent to the location map in the upper-right corner. They're labeled 1E. For area layout, 1F is the clubhouse, 1G is the lawn in front of the clubhouse toward the Mystic River, and 1H is the property immediately adjacent to Mr. Oviats. 1J, which is down by the lawn tramp toward the lower right-hand edge of the drawing, is really, it's the lawn tramp, and it's also the Mystic River, and highlighted just so that everybody keeps, knows that that's water.
Excuse me, Keith, can everyone see this figure? Because the screen sharing was something Larry and I were working on before the meeting. Can you all see the figure? Bear with me if you can still hear me, I'm.
I hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, my problem is I'm trying to get back to the Zoom screen, and having a hard time with that. Well, great, we've got audio, but I don't have. There we go. All right. Now, we have everyone back, and everybody can hear me, right?
Yes.
So, now, is it help, do you all see that figure once I take our pictures back off, and is that helpful for you? Because you all got it yourselves, at least commissioners did, so. Okay. All right, Keith, then, keep going, please.
Okay, sure. What I would like to focus on, on sheet one, this will be my last topic on sheet one, is that where it says 1B, right in the middle of the parking lot, you can see that there are elliptical contours around 1B. What they are showing you is that the water which arrives on the site in storm conditions, the rainfall, flows into the site, one, from Front Street, and two, across the site from the clubhouse building toward the southeast corner of the property down near item 1C. And the problem with this is that this isn't a, a inefficient, it's actually a basin where water can collect in hard rain conditions and in coastal flooding conditions, and that's one of the condition site characteristics that we're trying to remedy. The site is located along the Mystic River, which is an estuarian embankment. This is a modified, developed shorefront. And so, and it's completely developed shorefront, which is not untypical of, of most of Noyan shoreline because of the harsh exposure and so on. There is no tidal wetlands, no submerged aquatic vegetation, no rare or endangered species on the site. All of the coastal area management resources that we are supposed to evaluate and consider in a project like that have been considered in the written report, which you also had an electronic copy of, a PDF copy of. The conclusions that we have drawn are that this project is not going to create any adverse environmental impact. We have provisions to maintain the existing site in such a way that erosion and sedimentation in the river will not be an issue. And the time of year when this is scheduled is going to be in the mid to late fall so that we do not have to do any construction work during spring when conditions can be somewhat more unpredictable. And I've drawn all of those conclusions in the project application documents, the CAM application. If there are any questions on it, I'd be happy to answer them. Moving on to sheet two.
Yeah, I'm gonna get there right in a second here.
Take your time, I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
Here we are. Okay.
That's still sheet one.
Uh, no, I don't think so. It's got all that extra. This looks like you're before, that you're after of your before and after.
This is, this is the before. It's still got all the nomenclature for number, sheet number one on it, each of those circles.
Yeah.
The sheet two has numeral two in the, in the circles.
Yeah, that, it should be up on the screen now. It's on my screen. Maybe, all right, let me.
Yeah.
Maybe the sharing hasn't happened yet. Let's, let me just try and get that.
There, there you go. That's the one.
Okay.
Can you raise that drawing a little bit?
I wanna get some of this stuff out of here first. Now, you want this raised? How's that?
Perfect. Yeah, maybe down just a bit.
All right.
Good, right there. Okay, so this is sheet two of the, the drawing, and this shows the post-improvement conditions. And I would like to direct your attention to 2A, which is right in the middle of the sheet, just above the project center line and between the first and second broad triangular lines. That is the parking lot. Those diagonal lines are the contours that are going to be reestablished in this project. So what you can see here is that the, the drainage system, the drainage characteristics of the site will not collect water anymore. The, the broad elliptical basin from sheet one appears in lighter contrast beneath the exist, the proposed contours. What you will have is a approximately a 1% longitudinal slope from Front Street down to the lawn tramp, and a 2% transverse slope from the edges of the parking lot to the middle of the parking lot. This will help water to focus, the water will flow perpendicular to the, the contour lines that we have shown there. And so, this will make drainage off the site much more efficient. And over on the right-hand side of the page where details 2B and 2C are indicated, you get an idea of what this scope of work is going to be because it's hard to visualize the pulverizing and regrading of the project, but detail 2C shows it pretty clearly. Material from the high side of the site, which is north of the central line, will be regraded to the south side to fill in the dip that exists. Then crushstone will be added to that material and blended in so that it will increase the structural capability of the soil and, and also make it more compactable. It will also make the soil highly pervious and much more readily draining when the soil conditions beneath the pavement are saturated, which is going to happen during coastal flooding situations. The new pavement will extend right from the edge of Front Street. It will go up about two to three inches, and then it will start its 1% slope down to the lawn tramp. And the, the other conditions that are shown on here is, are the markings that will be placed on the pavement after the project is complete. And we have two handicap access parking spaces straddling the entrance walkway. All the other parking spaces are nine-by-20-foot spaces. You can see that we have preserved the turf buffers around the site. There are a couple of gray shaded areas along the southerly border of the parking lot. Those are the areas where the docks are stored in the winter, and so I've shown that this is a multi-use pavement used by members for parking in the season and in the off-season, it's used for some, there's a couple of boats up near the clubhouse right now, and we've got these, the floating docks stored on-site. There will be no changes to the grounds north of the parking lot. And so, the site will remain, you know, pretty much as it is up there at this point. I'd be happy to take any of your comments at this time. But before we do that, I would like to just point out that in the, on page three of the application narrative, I've outlined the performance standards that are appropriate for a public, I'm sorry, for a special permit. This project does not require a special permit. This is maintenance of an existing facility. It's not new development, although the surface of the pavement will be new when it's finished. And so, we have addressed all of those performance standards from section 14 of the zoning regs just to make sure that everybody can see that this is not controversial development. And we've drawn the appropriate summaries. We've addressed the erosion sediment controls. We've addressed the site plan considerations that are also referenced in zoning regulations, and we've drawn the appropriate conclusion in the last paragraph on page five. So, if, if you all have any questions, I do have to deal with them at this point.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion? Seth?
I make a mo, a motion that the commission find that the request of the Ram Island Yacht Club for municipal coastal site plan approval to restore the paved area of the parking lot at 60 Front Street No Ink is consistent with all applicable goals and policies in section 22A-92, and incorporates as conditions or modifications all reasonable measures which would mitigate the adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water-dependent development activities.
A second. Lynn, Lynn, okay, motion made, second discussion on the motion. Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. I see three opposed, no other members, so motion is unanimous, so you have your approval of coastal site plan, Keith.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your opportunity to present this tonight, and have a great evening.
Good, thank you. Let's see now. Now, we need to get Nip and Dana back somehow. Not quite sure how we're gonna do that unless they're hearing within earshot. There's Nip, good. And Dana, great. So, we are now back to full membership, which means Lynn is now an alternate and not, at this moment, a participant in the meeting. Okay, now, we have no zoning officers' report. We have review of minutes. They came out by email today. I'm gonna recommend we postpone them till the June meeting. As I asked for comments a bit earlier, it looked like it took people, you know, we, we got them to you too late, and we'll try and do better next time, but maybe we'll just hold off till June and review and approve them at that time. How's that? Okay, so nods, all right. Old business. Discussion of proposed language for text amendment to noink ordinances to allow CEO approval of solar applications. This is on page two of your agenda. I'll read it. My name's Rick Smith, Chairman, Nip.
Can we get rid of the drawing for the?
Oh. Yeah, definitely. I don't have it in front of mine, but I'll close them all now. Or, let's see. How's that?
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna read this so we have it as part of the recording. All, this is an amendment that would be to our zoning book in section 2.26.6.2 Administrative Design Review. All applications for design review shall first be reviewed by the zoning enforcement officer. The zoning enforcement officer may approve minor applications for design review. These applications shall be limited to replacement of windows, roofing, doors, steps, stairs, decks, patio siding, the additional language roof-mounted solar systems, and other exterior features with the same or approximately similar styles that will have a minor impact on the property provided that all applications are in keeping with the intent of the design review guidelines of section 2.26. Otherwise, the zoning enforcement officer will refer applications to the commission for further review if necessary in his opinion. Applications approved by the zoning enforcement officer by this method will not be subject to section 2.26.8 posting of property. Now, that's proposed language for a text change. I believe, although I'm remiss, I didn't actually ask Bill List. Nip, you were past chairman. I think we schedule this for a public hearing at our next meeting. Is that correct? For text, yeah, okay. So, it, let's first have discussion on the language, make sure everybody's comfortable with that. If we are, we'll look at the calendar and, and see about scheduling it. I, I don't know, is it more than 30 days? I know he has to notify some of the state agencies, but I think we anticipated that this was a non-controversial thing. It was a unanimous vote to do it this way in the first place. So I think he's already begun that notification process, but I don't know if it's 45 days. I'll have to check with him about scheduling. So, let's, let's talk about the language first and make sure everybody's comfortable. Okay. When he, as we had discussed at the last meeting, there are two or three things that we will want him to always look at, kind of a checklist with an applicant. And those are the things we always ask questions about it at the meetings when an applicant is in front of us. The color of the, the down run, the putting the power boxes on the back of the building or the side where it's not visible from the street, the standard things like that, he will ask the applicant. But if the applicant satisfies him to all of those conditions, then he will just approve the proposal without having it come to us. So, is there any disagreement with the language or that approach? Nip?
We created some specific language for color panels, and it might be useful in this modification after, you know, the new words to include parenthetically in accordance with section, whatever the number is, to give a reference to both any applicants and to Bill about what they should be looking at.
Yep. Beth, you were the, the workhorse on preparing that section that we adopted a couple of years ago. Do you remember off the top of your head what that was, what section it was?
Yeah. We put it at the end.
Yeah. So basically, Nip, you're saying that that added language roof-mounted solar systems, you would add something like consistent with the provisions of section XYZ. Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Good idea.
Yeah, I don't know if I have the most up-to-date ones in front of me.
Well, as long as we understand and, and agree with the concept, we'll, we'll fill a number in later, so. If there's no objection with adding that phrase, we'll do that, and, and that will be the, the language that'll be posted to the newspapers for the public here. Okay, I don't see any objections, so. There's absolutely no reason that I can see of to to have a public hearing on a different night than our, one of our next meetings. It might not be till July, but the next available regular meeting schedule is for hearing. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, I don't see any disagreement. Good for. Okay, for the next regular meeting, consistent with statutory deadlines, okay. All right, so then we can move on from that issue, okay? And then we're, other old business is the meat of the night, as always, for the discussion of STR issues. So, to recap where we were, we had worked on the matrix. We had asked Lynn to prepare different definitions. Pulled people, and we put those definitions in, and by the way, this matrix is attached to the agenda that got emailed to everyone. So everyone should have a copy of that. And we had, actually, before I get to the matrix, we had two other things that had come up, and we had said we would do them. Dana had prepared a proposed alternative statement of purpose. It was attached to the agenda, and you've had a chance to read it for a while. And Lynn's proposed revised definitions for the matrix are in here as item three in the agenda, the supplementary material. So I don't wanna jump ahead of those too far. Are there comments on, before we go to the matrix, are there comments on either the statement of purpose or the proposed definitions? Okay, so we can leave them be for Lynn. You're unmuted now, Lynn.
Okay, got it. I thought that the statement of purpose, you know, helped get it into a better framework, better language. I thought that there were a couple of things that I thought needed, that we had called out specifically in our, in the original statement of purpose that I thought were important. One was preventing the properties from, from functioning like hotels, and the other one was discouraging replacement of permanently occupied residences or long-term rental properties by non-owner occupied short-term rentals. So I thought those could be added. I also thought on, on A, that balance I didn't think was really. that balance I didn't think was really the key thing because it is balancing the desire of property owners to rent their residential properties to guess for compensation against the desire of residents to preserve the traditional peace and quiet. I thought it was against all of the things that, all of the goals that we had for the community. And also, I thought what I had heard property owners saying was not so much being able to rent their residential properties to guess for compensation, which is related to, is focusing on it as a business, which of course it is, but rather to do it enough so that they could get help with their taxes, property tax relief. And I think those are different.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we're making an actual recording of this, so we'll capture those points and I think we really eventually want to marry the good ideas and Dana's approach and the good ideas and the other approach and.
I would be glad, I would be glad to try a draft of that. I already kind of have it roughed out.
Okay.
If people agree with that.
Yeah, that's fine. Anybody disagree? Okay, we'll do that in email and we'll use the same rule, normal to consider it a staff draft. So we get a look at it and make corrections before we make it public. Okay, other comments on the statement of purpose? Okay, comments on the proposed revised definitions, number three of the supplementary material behind the agenda? Okay, then for now, let's just leave them and go to the matrix and, you know, nothing is set in stone. Still, we're just, we'll make adjustments as we go. So the matrix. Two things that I did after our last meeting that I mentioned when I sent it back out to you. I put in the proposed definitions that Lynn had drafted. And they're captured in a few words at the top, but then the full definition is on page two, second page of the matrix. I also added in that moratorium on short term rental issue. It had popped up on the whiteboard exercise over the winter or the fall and hadn't gotten in here and I didn't want to lose sight of it. We may kick it out, we may leave it in, but I didn't want it to be forgotten. So I put that in. And I don't think I made any other changes to this since we were still actively debating it at the end of the last meeting. One of the things left over from the last meeting, Dana had asked me to explain my reluctance about permit limits, allocations of permits and then limiting them. And I just didn't have the time to answer it then. So if you'll indulge me, I'll go through a little bit of a lengthy discussion and try and give you a sense of where I'm coming from on the whole issue. First of all, I think permits are, should be required and they should be revocable. I mean, that's held over from the graft of a year ago. I didn't want anybody at the outset to think that I was opposed to permits for some reason. My concern about them is limiting them when you, you there are logistic problems with it. There are principal problems in my view and there's legality issues. And I'm just going to run through some bullets to try and emphasize my points and I can expound on them further if you like. Once you allocate permits and they're limited, you're going to be in a position now or later with denying somebody from getting a permit and awarding it to the other. And that means you have to track the permit and qualify, make sure the person is properly qualified to have a permit. And all of this becomes administrative time and it can be time consuming. Same logic, it's been suggested in our, one of our discussions in maybe May 2nd about clustering permits, where you have one or two per neighborhood or one per street. Think about that for a minute. Somebody's got to track. Somebody wants to get into the meeting. Okay. You have to track. Let's say there's a, you don't want clusters of short term rental properties to occur because it diminishes the quality of life for the people that are around them. So you say you can have one every hundred yards or one every 200 yards or some kind of a spacing rule. Well, somebody has to track that. And if that permit goes by the boards and somebody else applies to have that permit, then you have to rejuggle all of the distances. And you may find that somebody can't have a permit that otherwise would qualify because these two houses away from one of the other guys who has a permit. Only using that as an example to talk about the administration and management of this kind of a system. It all comes forth when you allocate them and become a, they become a scarce resource. So you got to validate, validate qualifying documents and claims. And you also have to watch for false claims. I hate to, you know, think ill of my fellow man, but people are people. And if something like a permit becomes something of value, you have to be watchful for somebody who's going to give you false information to try and acquire a permit. So you have to look at the qualifying documents and you may have to, you know, check into those things. Takes time. People denied permits may want to appeal. In fact, I could almost guarantee you if a person is denied a permit and he's really ambitious about short term renting, he's going to want to appeal, which means the commission is going to have to have an appeal process. And then somebody has to make the judgment calls. We could be sitting in judgment on a number of appeals, each with its own qualifying information, and then we have to make those judgment calls. So that's staff time, CEO time, and also commission time. And then once you retire a permit, let's say a person passes away. Do you issue a new one by a waiting list or do you have a lottery? And God forbid, if we aren't watching this and we create a right in perpetuity that is transferable. I mean, that, that would carry its own whole host of problems with it. So our document last year had a permit in it and it was non transferable. And I think that makes sense, but it's also, it can always be a debatable point. So that's the administrative and management concerns. A little bit about principles, the fairness and equity concerns. When one person can get a permit and two or three around him can't, you're going to create winners and losers. And that pits neighbor against neighbor. And, you know, one of our goals is to perpetuate community harmony and believe me, that's not the way to do it. If, I mentioned the clustering before, the need for spacing and the inequity that could happen with that. In effect exclusion zones where somebody otherwise might qualify for a permit, but he only lose 50 yards from somebody else who has one. So you have to, not only is that an administrative burden, but it's also a fairness issue. And finally, the legal issues. We're going to, if we do this, we're going to need an exceptional justification because you can always already see how discussions are shaping up. For example, legacy owners, which, I mean, everybody in their heart says, you know, of course, if somebody's five generations in knowing they ought to be able to keep the house and rent their property, we want to make sure they can keep their house. But from a legal point of view, I don't know what the basis is to say somebody who's been here for, their grandfather bought the house 70 years ago. Why that person has any more right to rent his property than somebody who moved here six years ago? I'm not an attorney, but I, that one would, in my mind, beg for a really good justification. And the same with the investor owner. The way I look at that one, you know, somebody is ready to retire in 10 years and he wants to retire to knowing. And he, or she buys a house and comes here two weeks a year to vacation with the anticipation of moving here when they retire. That person under the discussions we've been having might not be able to rent their house short term rental. But somebody who comes here for five weeks of the year is able to. And I just, in my mind, it's an obstacle, but the need would be if we pursue that, we're going to have to have a really, really good justification. Because I don't see a basis, the lawyers call it, it's the rational basis. And I don't see it for drawing those kinds of lines. So that's way more than you probably needed out of me. I've got ideas on alternatives, but they'll wait for another day because really the issue here was I wanted to be fair in my response to Dana and make sure he got an answer to the question he asked because it's a fair question. So any comments or do you want to go into the matrix and do more with it, Lynn?
I'll just, I'll just respond quickly, not, not to try to get into a big discussion. But I have been asking some other communities what they've been doing. And I know that the percentage limit is viable. You know, we were given, you know, over a year ago, a whole set from, I think, a New Orleans study that Larry provided. And there were some that had the percentage limit in there. I've also talked to Michelle Reed, who's the principal planner in Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. And they have a 1% cap. Now, they just started that in January, so it's probably not the best one for comparison. Their problem has not been with that. They, they have not filled all their cap. Their problem is, is they've got a lot of people who are just blowing it and not operating without a license and they don't have the staff to enforce it. So that's another problem. But someone who is using it and has gone up against the licenses in Durango, Colorado. I talked today to Dan Armentano, who's the town planner there. And they have, they have, they do it by neighborhoods, but some of the neighborhoods do have a 3% cap. And with those, it took a couple of years to fill those caps. And now they have waiting lists that are about the same number as the number of licenses. So they will be waiting for a while. He said, the, the good thing about it is, is that people really respect the regulations. Because if they lose that license, they go on the waiting list. So they have to wait a very long time to get their license reinstated. One thing that they have, they also, they have like one per block. But you can get a second one and that's done with just administrative review. So it's automatic. But if you, but if it's an owner occupied, they can potentially have a second one per block. And I don't know what all the, the criteria are, but it has to be owner occupied. They've also currently, the one complaint that they have had was people saying, we can't afford to stay in our homes. And so what they're thinking of doing now is having a separate permit for a short term room rental to allow people, if they really, really need that to stay, to be able to limit rooms on, in an owner occupied or owner on site paradigm. So that being said, I think their experience has been that it has been all right. It doesn't really address, Beth, what you said last time, which was that, you know, when you have a waiting list, there may be someone who really needs that benefit versus someone who just wants to make some extra money. And the person who just wants to make some money is next on the waiting list and that is not helping the person who really needs the money. So that, that point, I think, still remains very valid.
Okay, others, others, thank you. Okay. So we had three, two proposals of, of meat, which was number of permits by the RV district, 10 in each of the three categories, which was about 5% of the properties. And in the other residential district, 10% of the properties. I think this, Nip?
Have we accepted the definitions that Lynn proposed?
No, I asked her comments and we didn't get any. So I just figured, you know, they'd come up at the right time. This may be the time.
Okay.
Do you want to?
Well, I have a question. I, I wonder how we would administer the the first one, owner's legal residence resides in it more than six months a year is present during rentals. So the owner says they're going to be there, but they are not a full time resident. How do we administer that?
You mean administer it or approve it?
No, it's easy to, somebody says, this is the deal. I want to rent a room. I'm here six months plus one day. And I want to be able to rent out my house when I'm here and only when I'm here. And under the rest of the matrix, there's some benefit to being in that category. But how do we make sure that they're actually on site during rentals?
Yeah, that's an enforcement need. Good question. Anybody who, frankly, I thought that was a problem with the original definition too. I mean, it was somebody needs to go around and check or you have to wait for a neighbor who calls in and says he shouldn't be doing this. It's, he's violating the rules. I mean, that's the two ways those things come, get reported. Nip?
The original definition was pretty much lifted from the new regulations in Preston, which says that in order, in their case, it's not short term rentals, but it's any rentals in a residential property. The owner has to be somebody who is there basically the whole year with occasional short term absences. In that case, they're allowed to rent out some of their property. But basically, the owner renter is going to be on site the vast majority of the year. And that was the basis for the original definition in that block.
Yeah, and see, that's one of the concerns I had with the original definition. What's an occasional brief absence? Every time he gets caught? I mean, I agree with you that it has to be as tight as possible and we're not there yet. But I don't know that that definition makes me any more comfortable than saying hard and fast, if you're renting your place, you have to be there. And then somebody is either going to have to report it or the CEO on a complaint goes out and checks. Either way, it's difficult, but it seems to me on the second version, not the original, it's tighter in terms of catching somebody if they're violating the rule. Because an occasional brief absence could mean anything to anybody anytime. Nip?
No, I give up.
Okay, anybody else? Lynn?
Well, I think, I think what we've seen in terms of how often they reside, because there is more than six months a year. There's been, we've seen nine months and we've seen, you know, essentially full time. And we've seen that in one of their, Nip, you're over there now. I've seen it in, you know, that it's given us a certain number of days per year. And so, you know, it ends up being something I don't remember, 11 months or something. But I've seen all of those. And basically, if it's someone's primary residence, you do have legal documents that show that. For anything more than that, they're basically signing a form that gives you their word that they're, that that's the case. And that's, that's all you have to go with, really.
Well, I guess I'm leery about a definition that. Well, I, I guess I'm leery about a definition that depended on, I promise. Not to be facetious, but really, it needs to be tighter than that, I mean. Ideally. We have a zoning enforcement officer, and he only works a few hours a week, maybe it's calls for some more hours, but. Let's talk about really what we're trying to get at with these definitions and, and the categories of owner operator, which is how the. The matrix defines those. Aren't we really talking about hosted houses versus non-hosted houses? Because that's the way Ledger defined them, and it was basically. There's a property that is rented and the owner's on site. And they have to obey certain rules. And then the other type of property is, the owner's not on site, and they have to obey a different set of rules. And, and the difference is because of your relative satisfaction that a hosted operation is. Better able to control bad behavior, and it's better able to promote that sense of harmony in the community, that's one of our goals. Whereas the non-hosted property, it's either empty or it's partially empty, and. If a rental comes in and it doesn't have an owner or an operator there. The way our discussion was going, there was a concern that. Bad behavior isn't squelched as quickly as it is if the owner is there. So it, let me just run that up the flagpole, is that really what we're trying to accomplish, is hosted versus unhosted? Beth?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking, when I was reading the definitions that Lynn did and the definitions that Nip did. I was looking back at, way back when, when this first thing whole started, Nip had handed out. An extract from the Shelter Island regulations, and they don't get into all the residency stuff. They'd say an owner occupied premises as a residential property on Shelter Island may be rented as often as desired and without limit. As to frequency or duration or term, where the, where one of the following is simultaneously domiciled. On the same or immediately adjacent lot. With tenant or tenants during a rental, either the owner, a member, uncompensated member of the owner's immediate family. If a trust, the trustee beneficiary or settler, if a corporation, the president, a majority shareholder. And if a LLC, a member, so, I mean, that's getting back to. What, what you were just saying, that, you know, really, the meat and potatoes of this is you want somebody, if you're going to give a greater. Frequency of rentals or more leeway with doing rentals. It's not because the person resides in knowing six months of a year, it's because the person is residing in knowing at the time that the rental is happening. So I think maybe, is just my suggestion, that are, these definitions kind of get away. So much from the, a period of residency, six months, nine months, whatever, because the issue, I think, for everybody is really. Are they on site at the time of the rental? If they are, then maybe they get more leeway than somebody who's not. And then maybe we don't have so many definitions, but. That's just my two cents.
Okay. Lynn?
Lynn, I, I have gone and looked through regulations from other places. And I haven't seen anywhere where they have these four categories. I've either seen just one category for everybody, or at most two categories. And they are based on owner onsite and owner offsite, that, that's a distinction that can be made. And it can be, they've allowed both, or they only allow owner onsite. And I've also seen the requirement that it be principal residence. And, and those sometimes can be combined with those other, that other definition. But I haven't, but I've seen principal residence, and then whether the owner's onsite or not. And I haven't seen anything else used unless someone can think of some other regulations where we're missing something. But I don't know. If we can, our categories three and four there, I don't know if legally we can have a category, distinguish those categories.
Anybody, I have a view on that, but I. Looking for other people first. Alright. You're talking about whole house seasonal residency versus absentee or investor. And, and that one draws my attention too, well, actually, I guess I said it before, I, I don't want to belabor it. A few weeks a year, and telling the person they can't rent them at all versus five weeks here, or four weeks here, you can. Is a hard sell. And I guess I would ask how. How badly we want to say that the summer cottage person. Who just stays here two weeks a year shouldn't be able to rent at all. As opposed to, should he be treated like any other non-hosted or, or non-resident who doesn't reside there when the property is being rented? I agree fundamentally with what you said, Lynn, that, that, you know, the fewer of these columns we have, the better, it just, it will simplify. And it will keep us from having the right separate. Rational basis arguments for why we make four distinctions, which will be harder to do. So, in, in. Throwing an idea out there, I would say that column four. That type of person, the, the definition up there ought to be embedded into number three. They basically should be treated the same way. I don't know if that's a help to people, or creates a problem that you don't want to go down that road.
I just don't know if legally we, we can separate them, I just don't see that there's a basis. I don't see, I don't see any other communities who have done that, which makes me think that, which kind of confirms my suspicion that we could not. But.
I guess I'm asking for clarity on what you're saying, I, do I hear you saying that. Column three and column four should be combined somehow? Because you haven't seen other communities do it that way, or am I missing your point?
Right, that, that is correct, and I don't see any legal way that you can say, you know, that you can differentiate those. You know, going back to our goals or something that would really stand, stand out. I know we don't want investors, the investor owner. You know, that's, that, that is, you know, a lot of business activity in a residential neighborhood, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the concern.
Yeah, let, let me ask you to expand on that a little bit, you're saying you, you don't want absentee or, or investor owner, but. If you combine those two columns, you have to deal with them one way or another, they're very different in how they treat the two columns.
Yeah, yeah, so, so they get lumped, so they get lumped together, you have got all of it together. The, the other thing, a, and then we've got the legacy in there because, a, as well, so you've got three different things. In lumped into that same category, that I'm not sure we can treat differently, even though we might like to.
Okay, I, I'm basically asking. Have you defend the in, investor column? If you can't, then we should take it out, you've said we don't want to have investor owners, and I've made the point that. I'm not sure why you should tell a guy who's here for a few weeks, he can't rent, and a guy who's here for five weeks that he can, and if that's the case, then. I mean, if you're right, we have to leave the column there, because you want to tell investors they can't rent. If I'm right, we take the column out, because we don't intend to treat them any differently than some part time resident. Who's not here when it's rented. So the, I'm just trying to tease out which. Which one you prefer, and see if anybody else, hey, you know, I'll get to you in a minute, Nip, I just want to see if I can follow this.
Yeah, it's not, it's not my preference. I'm saying, when we did the whiteboard exercises, those were the distinctions we wanted to make. We had whole house seasonal residency, and then as a subcategory of that, we had the legacy. And then we had the absentee or the investor as a different category. So that was what we. We preferred to make those differentiations when we were doing the whiteboard exercise, that was the group. That came up with that, not, this wasn't Lynn Marshall, it was the group. Now, I'm saying, as we think about it, can we actually make those distinctions? Do we have any grounds for making those distinctions, would they hold up? And I don't see any evidence that those distinctions hold up.
And I think I'm on, I think I'm on the same wavelength. I don't have a solution yet, but at least there's a better meeting of the minds, Nip, you're next.
Yeah, my impression is that several jurisdictions that are significantly larger than Knowank. Have decided that they do not want investor owned property operating as short term rentals. I think both New York and Boston have taken strong action to prevent people from buying. Properties, including apartments, apartment buildings and so forth, for the sole purpose of operating short term rentals. But my sort of, sort of primary point, my other point is, we seem to be. Worrying about the legal consequences of what we might do without any foundation. And. As I think I've said before, I think a better approach for us is figure out what we want to do. What we'd really like to do without making any assumptions about whether it's legal or not. And then go to our attorney and say, this is what we want to accomplish, please tell us how to do it. And if you think we can't do it, that's fine, but I think for us to cut ourselves off from doing something, as Lynn noted. When we went through the flip chart exercises, there seemed to be a fairly strong consensus of the people who participated. In those discussions, that we did not want to have short term rental properties that were investor owned.
Dana?
Dana, I agree, Nip, we definitely don't want investor owned properties. Problem is, how, how do we define that? It'll be very difficult to define that as, as how many days they are there a year. And it'll be difficult to, to define category three in the same way, owner present seasonally or on weekends. But, you know, there's no definition behind it, there's no operational definition. And the only other point I want to make is, I thought that we had a three year moratorium, maybe, Rick, you brought that up at one point, that would take care of. The absentee or investor, so if you bought a house, you would be prevented, prevented for three years before. Renting it out as an Airbnb, I don't know if that takes care of making sure there's no investor or not.
Well, that, yeah, I had mentioned after I described my reluctance on permit limits. I had said I had other ideas on how to do this instead of limiting permits. One of them was that very provision. Whether it applied to. Everyone, or just to. Unhosted properties was something that I'd be happy to, to debate and listen to the pros and cons, but the point was. With measures like that, that are independent of what kind of permits you have. If, if a person knows that he's going to buy a property, but he's not going to be able to use it to rent it short term. On, on a short term basis for three years after the point he purchases it, that's going to depress the interest to, to be involved in. In, in investor. Owned short term rental properties. Now, maybe three years isn't the right number, maybe it should be five, I, I don't know, but the concept was. Try to treat everybody the same, and try to adopt limits that. Disincentivize the things you don't want to have happen, and a moratorium that prevents you from. Sorry. A moratorium that prevents you from doing short term rentals. For some long period of time after you've purchased. Maybe one of those ways to, to prevent, or at least diminish the, the chances that that would occur. I can think of problems with that too, but at least that's, that's a way that doesn't get you all tangled up in different types of permits and, and. You know, qualifications for the permits. Anybody else? Lynn?
Yeah, just so we have everything on the table. The way other communities have done it, and. And, and in fact. In. Host compliance and, in some of their ordinance planning, an ordinance planning seminar. One of, one of their recommendations is to only allow permanent residents to operate short term rentals. So that, that cuts out other people, but that is one, that is one solution.
So only permanent residents could do short term rentals at all? So anybody who owns a knowing property. And is here for any amount of time, but is a legal resident elsewhere. Those people couldn't rent at all.
Under that rule, that's correct.
Okay, others? Larry?
Well, hello, everyone. Very done back. I, I thought we were going to go through an iterative process that said, you have these definitions, and quite frankly. You could almost pick anything, and you'll find some community that has used it. I mean, it's all over the place, so there is no standard, there's no accepted, it's, it's, you know, anything you want is out there, including, you can't have it at all. Right? Period. So, you know. If we do this iteratively, take what you got, I do believe when we go through all the detailed line items, we're going to find out that we're going to collapse them. Because what's the difference at the end? So. You know, is the way to proceed is to kind of start going through the matrix. With the definitions that are there, and then come back to things that said, the only difference between column two and column three is. You know, such a minor item, let's collapse them, do we, do we have to do that now? I think we know the objectives, I, I apologize, I'm late, did you go over the objectives? The statement of purpose?
Yeah, we did, so, Lynn is going to take a crack at merging them.
Okay. But I think keeping that in mind, you know, on the side, and just go through, you know, all the different elements. And see if we can process it out, I, I, I think we're trying to come up with an answer before we do all the work. But just my two cents.
Yeah, we are talking about the columns, and, and whether they're, they're enough or too many, or, or what the distinctions are. Was that Blake I saw the hand up, yeah, Blake?
Yeah, so, I mean, the same point I made in the last meeting is what Larry's talking about, I agree, I, I don't necessarily. Think that the final rule has to have all these categories, but I have no problem just leaving them in there right now for purpose of the discussion, so we can really decide if there is a. Difference in any of them, based on these individual constraints that we're discussing. And we just, for example, supervision of STRs, owner on site is no different than designated local full time resident representative. That, that is what an owner on site would be, so they're all the same when you go across. And that's the intent, is what we want, is a designated full time resident in that, in that particular case, so. I don't think there's any difference in one, two, or three, once we go through it all. The fourth category, maybe, I'm, I'm, I'm leaving that one, you know, open, but I wouldn't leave it as owners on site less than 30 days a year. I'd say the owner is truly an absentee or investor owner, they're not on site at all, ever. They're not on site at all, ever. So I think that one almost stands alone as its own category. But regardless, as we go through each of these rows, I think that we're going to find that there really isn't any substantive difference between each of them. So I'm, but I'm fine leaving them there for a purpose of discussion so we can look at each of these issues individually and see if we really do think that there needs to be a difference.
Actually, the example you used in the first part of what you said is, I, I would interpret that differently. That's one of the few real big distinctions between the columns. Owner on site is only an owner. The other two columns, it's somebody hired by you. And, and there's a big difference between an owner and, you know, the paid representative. Or I think last week we talked about whether maybe a long term renter in a duplex qualifies as the representative and then the other half of the duplex can do short term rentals. But overall, I take your point that there are not a lot of differences between these columns till you get down to the number of rentals per time period. And between column two and column three, other than the definitions, they're identical all the way down the columns till the last line, option B, number of nights. One, it's, and I know Nip, he wasn't putting his preferences in here. He was just trying to capture the essence of what was said in the whiteboarding. So, you know, don't shoot the messenger. But the only difference there was 60 nights per year versus 40 night, five nights per year. And if that's the only difference, then maybe those two columns are, are ripe for putting together. So I understand you saying, don't bother with them now, leave them and consolidate later. Here's the problem, as we go down the list, we really need to decide if we're going to do the permit issue. If we're going to constrain the number of permits, limit permits or not. Because if you don't limit permits, you have to be sure you have very restrictive rules for everybody. If you do limit permits, you could have more liberal rules for the few that get the permit. But that in itself creates that whole winner and loser and, you know, neighbor against neighbor thing. But I, I, I think before we get too much farther down the list, we will have to go back and figure out just what we're really trying to talk about in the columns. But I don't mind doing as you suggest. If everybody agrees with it, we just go down and see how many, how many places we can agree and then identify where the disagreements are. So Dana.
Dana Oviet, I'll just point out one thing. There may not seemingly be a, a big difference between the three or four categories. But when you look at the number of people who are doing short term rentals in the village right now, it makes a lot of difference. Makes a huge difference. That, that's all I can say because I've, I've looked at who's doing short term rentals and who isn't. And I've tried to figure out, well, who would be allowed to do short term rentals and who would not be allowed to do short term rentals in each of these categories? And how you define them makes a big difference. So working your way down, I think you're avoiding the elephant in the room to a certain extent.
So you're saying we have to define those categories first?
I, I think I'm agreeing, I think I'm agreeing with Nip. In that, yeah, we ought to, we ought to define the categories. And we ought to define the categories so that we figure out what it is we actually want to do. Because otherwise, if we go down through this list, we'll just be procrastinating.
Okay, am I just over simplifying by saying that very top row, one is partial house rental owner present, the other is whole house rental owner absent? Do those, do those capture almost all of, of the circumstances that, all, almost all of the conditions? I know there's always going to be outliers and we'll deal with them later. But I'm just trying to understand where everybody thinks the categories ought to be, what they ought to be based on. Never mind what the definition says for now, but is it just partial house owner present, partial house rental owner present, whole house rental owner absent? Or does that not cap, I think it captures most of them, but I, I don't know. And I, I could just be so far off base, I want somebody to bring me back if, if I've gone out in the hinterlands here. Lynn?
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's what the category name is. When you look at the definition, it's different. And that, and that whether it's their legal residence or not, and that does make a difference. And so for example, let me give the example, if we look at all our goals, and one of them was that we don't want our, our residents replaced by, we don't want to do anything to encourage full time residents being replaced by part time residents. And what we've said, or we've noted in, in Noank is that we have more and more part time owners. It's not that any of them are not lovely people that we like, but it's the proportion of part time to full time owners that's getting larger. And that that does is hollowing out the community. And we've talked about the ways in that, which that happens. So now if you say, you don't have to be, it doesn't have to be your principal residence, you can be your part time. Now you're just encouraging people like, hey, here's an, here's a way now, you can afford that part time home, which you couldn't afford before. You can rent it out as an STR. And so now we don't even, we're going to have more part time owners and fewer full time, just because of what we've done with our zoning regulations.
Lynn, but let's make sure we're not confused on the definitions. Those two, first two columns, the partial house and the whole house, those, those definitions, which you drafted, are identical, except in the first column, the owner is present during the rental and the second column, he's not present during the rental. Everything else is the same.
Right, but I thought you were saying that those were the only two differences. And, and number two was the same as the other, other.
The only difference in what you gave us was partial house rental owner present, whole house rental owner absent. It didn't have, it didn't, I could have left out the words on owner's legal residence, but I, I added them both in because you had them there. But there's no difference between those two columns. If both are the owner's legal residence. Column three then becomes important because that's the one where it's not the legal resident. And then you have to decide whether you want to do that or not.
Right.
Okay. I, I just wanted to be sure we understood what we're talking about in column one or column two. Because I hadn't commented on that one yet. I, I just wanted to see.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had, I'm sorry.
Because those two, the only difference between those two columns is in the supervision of, of STRs. A little bit on parking, but not a huge distinction. And the number of rentals per week. I'm sorry, per number of nights. 75 versus 60. So they're also very similar. Even though the distinction is owner absent, owner present. Nip? Let me start over, you're unmuted now.
Why was I muted?
Because we're muting everyone except the speaker. But that means, because see Larry's bouncing back and forth with the town council meeting. So I'm having to do it all myself right now.
Okay, Nick Tanner. The distinction on parking between column A and column B is not trivial. In the case of owner on site during the rental, they are required to have parking space for the owner. And under our basic parking regulations, that would be two spaces for the owner. So given that they don't have an unlimited number of parking spaces, it would be a, a significant impact in terms of how much they could rent if they're there.
Okay, let's try and keep focused on the main question and.
Well, you went through and said that it was trivial. It's not trivial.
Okay, and we could debate that, but there's no point and it wastes our time. Let's talk about the definitions, the categories and the permits. That's what we set out to try and do. You raising your hand Blake or, or just, no? Yes? No, okay. All right, the last idea on approach was Blake's, was to move down the list and make sure we understand them and see if we had a, a full opinion on each one of those rows. So if I don't see any disagreement, let's start to do that. All right. And just assume for the moment the definitions are as they're printed on the page. So the number of permits in the RV district, it's all the same across. So no reason to, to talk about a distinction there. Same as number of permits other residential districts. So there's no difference between the columns. Do you think those are the appropriate types of numbers? Larry and then Blake?
On you. All right, well, I think the, the first question is the concept of limiting or having any number of permits versus restricting it by other means. I think we, we kind of went through that discussion in prior sessions. You know, you know, my view is, I, you know, to me, there's a lot more problems with trying to limit the number of permits than by doing it by what's called more natural means, like whether it's number of parking slots that Nip and or other things. So that, that's, you know, my input on that particular one that says, I wouldn't have the row. Right, so I think that's the first question. And the second question is, if the council agrees to have the row, then the second question is, how many?
Thoughts? Blake, sorry, I had you on the list.
Just that same point I raised last time, I, I still am against the concept of limiting the number of permits. There's some benefits to making it all, all things seem, seem simple, but just I, I just don't like that, that as a concept. Though whether they're all the same for each one, doesn't really matter to me. I, I don't know practically how you would do it. I don't know how many permits per street, you know, would be fair. You have some streets that are long, you have some that are short, it just doesn't make sense. And whether it's 5% of properties or total number of 10. I mean, unless you know exactly how many people are even offering up their homes as short term rentals, I don't really know that we can state whether that's a reasonable number or not.
Lynn?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be for the clustering, it doesn't have to be one per street. So in Durango, they do it one per block.
Yeah?
I agree with Blake's comments.
We sort of had this discussion two weeks, week and a half ago, but I wanted to have it again because I hadn't had a chance to answer Dana. And he deserved a, a complete answer from me. But we're now in the realm of talking about permit limits again, the same way we did at that meeting. I'm very reluctant to to forestall more debate if the debate is coming. But I also sense that maybe we sort of have our minds made up on permits. Doesn't mean we can, can't go back and change our mind as we continue development because this is going to be a couple of month worth of effort, I suspect. Having said that, I agree too, and I haven't changed my mind since last meeting. I would prefer a system that is, you set restrictive rules and you apply it to everybody as opposed to setting different permit categories and then giving them different rules and then having to justify and explain and, and manage the differences. That's three of us. Without having a motion, which I don't think could be productive at this time, can we start to move down this list with the working assumption that permits would not be limited or broken out by category? And just see where we get there? Nip? Okay, go ahead.
Well, I'm not making a motion.
No, I know, but did you want to comment?
I just did.
I'm sorry, you were muted.
I, I think this is way too significant a decision for us not to make the decision based on a motion with a vote on the record. So we know where everybody stands.
Okay, the only reason I'm suggesting that isn't really necessary is the record's going to be clear that right now we're leaning against limits. Once we make a motion, it, it's a, it's more formal, I think, than we need to be right now. Three of us think we'd like to pursue no, no permit limits. Two, Dana hasn't weighed in yet, so I'm not sure. But three to two so far, even if he agrees with you. And it, nothing is set in stone. All I'm suggesting is, as a working model for now, go down the list as if we're going to let, not limit permits and see what we come up with. See what kind of management measures come up. Maybe it'll make us all so uncomfortable, we'll go back and say, oh gee, I guess we're going to have to do limits. So a motion to me just, you know, it sends a signal that doesn't need to be sent at this time. We're still just trying to debate this matrix and figure out how, how all the different measures come together. Because the fact is, you, if you push on one, you're going to pull on the other and, and they're going to balance them out to some extent. And I just think we ought to continue debating, moving forward right now with a, you know, a working idea that permits would not be limited. Because that's what I heard three people say they were uncomfortable with. I didn't hear anybody saying, I'm going to make a motion and I want it hard and fast. Somebody wants to make a motion, that's fine, but I don't think it's productive at this time.
I make a motion that we have language which limits the number of permits. That's my motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Dana? Okay, just go, Dana, no, no?
Nip, can you tell me, can you just give me a few more sentences about what you're proposing? Just expand on what you're proposing because this is important to me.
Yes.
Before you do that, could we just maintain the parliamentary procedure? If you're going to second the motion so we can debate the motion, that's fine. You can always withdraw your second afterwards and, and decline to support the motion. But I don't want to have debate on a motion that hasn't gotten a second yet. Is that nodding your second name, Dana? Yes.
Yes, I get it.
Thank you. Okay, now your question to Nip. Dana, you had asked.
Can you expand on what you just said? Expand on the motion while you're making it and what, what, what benefits it would have? Yea or nay?
From fairly early on in our discussions with the flip charts, we talked about using A, permits and B, limiting the number of permits as a way that seemed to us in those discussions to make sense. The question of how many permits and what's the basis? how many permits and what's the basis for limiting them and do they, is it a different number by category and so forth? That's up for discussion, but I think that I personally am in favor of the basic concept of using a limited number of permits to control the number of short-term rentals. Now, I may lose this vote, but I would like it on the record and that's why I made it as a motion despite the chairman's preference that we not force a vote on this at this time.
Okay, others? Dana, I'm sorry, Blake?
Just to reiterate what I've said in the past about using the Zoom forum is I'm in favor of using this format or laying out what all the issues are and having a discussion about them. So we can all kind of get our heads wrapped around it. But when it comes to voting on anything definitively, I'd much rather do that in a public in-person type of meeting.
Okay. Others? Okay, I see no other questions or comments on the motion. So all in favor of the motion is include language that limits the number of permits. Is that correct, Nick?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. See two, all those against the motion, raise your hand. I see three, so the motion fails. All right. So now is what's your pleasure? Do you want to now go down this list and look at the management measures as if well, there will be for the duration of the debate unless we change it by another motion, no limits on permits. So that would start down at the row that is moratorium on short-term rentals. So is that how you'd like to proceed? Okay, I see one thumb up. It's good enough for me. Okay, it's the same across those categories. We talked about it a bit before, so let's just have some comment. Whether you think that's a useful way of constraining investors buying houses for the purpose of doing short-term rentals or anybody for the purpose of doing short-term rentals. Yeah?
I would just say I, I like that idea. I'm in favor of the moratorium. But for some reason I, and correct me if I'm wrong, when we discussed that with John Casey, did he say that we could, he thought we could do it or that we couldn't do it? Or did, I kind of have like a feeling and I don't have my notes from that night in front of me, but I felt like he was not in favor of that, but I could be completely wrong.
Yeah, I don't know if he was not in favor of it or he was not in favor of it applying it differentially to different groups. I don't know. But following Nip's lead, let's talk about what we think it ought to be in and we'll get our legal clarifications as soon as we can afterwards.
Well, then I would say I'm in favor of the three-year moratorium.
Larry? Wait a minute, Larry, you're muted. I'm going to unmute everybody. Because this is unless it becomes a problem.
Larry Dunn. I kind of like that. It's simple to understand. It covers legacy, it covers people been here for a while. The only thing I would say is in the last column, it shouldn't matter whether I'm absentee or investor or not. You know, if we do anything with them, you know, the prohibitive first, first three years would apply as well. So I'm not sure why that fourth column is different.
Well, it's a holdover from when we had distinctions there that were not-
Yeah, that's, I'm just pointing it out for-
So are you in favor of the three-year moratorium idea with that caveat?
Yes.
Okay. All right, others? Lynn?
Let Nick go first.
Yep.
How would it apply to what appear to be current investor properties? And we approved this regulation sometime later this year. And there's a property that's an investor-owned property. It's been primarily used for short-term rentals for a period of a couple of years. Does the three years start with the effective date of our regulation or the acquisition date of the property?
My experience with this kind of mechanism is you can't go backwards in time with it. It, the clock starts on the date the ordinance is adopted. Larry?
Yeah, I think that is correct because it's an ownership question, not an ordinance question. So on the first day of the ordinance, you'd go back three years and say, did you own at that point? If it's an investor and he had it for three years, that particular line item wouldn't impact. And there may be other line items that would restrict an absentee or an investor, but I don't think that one should. I mean, it should be crisp and across the board for everybody.
Yeah, I'm just remembering the legal arguments in my own experiences. You have a hard time adopting a regulation that says it applies to people, what people had done before the regulation was adopted. And I have this measure in the draft decision document. I'm not going to drag it out now, but I think it's worded differently. It's, the wording doesn't lend itself to a matrix, but it basically says from the date of the first date of sale after the ordinance is adopted, then it starts to apply.
So you're saying it's a new sale?
Yeah.
Not an existing owner?
Executed after the date.
That, that would, that would meet, you know, my, my, my objection or my concern with it. I'm just trying to say you can't kind of go backwards. All right.
All right. Lynn?
So Beth, what John Casey had said was that he would, he just said you had to have a good rationale for that. He didn't supply one for us, so. And I guess I think, you know, I think that, that might help with the investor. I think overall it provides limited, long-term provides limited protection, so it, it doesn't stand alone in providing a lot of protection for us, but it could be helpful.
Others? All right. Let's go down supervision of SDRs. This one also has distinctions. Owner on site versus a representative available. There's a column top says owner, present owner, absent. So I think the intent was again hosted versus non-hosted. Thoughts on that one? Blake and then Beth?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, I think just the intent that we want is to make sure that there is one person that's designated the responsible person. Whether they're an owner or someone hired to be, to fill that role, I don't think it's that big a deal, quite frankly. I think the intent is that there's definitely someone designated as the responsible person who can, who has the authority to take action if there's problems. Same thing. I mean, owner on site is a designated full-time resident representative. I mean, it's just a subset of that.
Let me ask you for clarification. When you say representative on hand, we had talked about response time, meaning the representative wasn't there. Are you talking about whether it's the owner or designated local full-time resident? You talking about somebody on the property or close to the property? You know, a neighbor or, I mean, how far removed is that designated representative before he's not responsive to the complaint?
How are we just defining a local full-time resident representative?
Well-
The categories.
Yeah, in the, in the draft document, which is a holdover from the public hearing document last year, we had some term locally available secondary contact and we batted around whether it should be a 30-minute response time or a 60-minute response time. Both of them suggesting that the person could be some distance away from the property and then there, I thought there had been some more discussion about having a person that was very close, like in the neighborhood. Maybe in the same zoning district. I don't know how you do it, but someone who could be very responsive if there was a need to control bad behavior. So I just want to be sure we understand what we mean by those terms. Owner on site is easy, but it's also the narrowest supervisory circumstance. And then the other two are you can designate someone, but really the question is how quickly is he going to be responsive to the complaint? My view would be it would be no more than 30 minutes. In fact, I would prefer it be someone in the neighborhood. Ideally, a next-door neighbor or across the street or a couple of houses down. I mean, if we're going to be tight on controlling bad behavior, you'd like to have that person there, but it does limit the owner's opportunities because he may not have a neighbor that is willing to take on that responsibility. I wouldn't. You know, it's, so then you're talking about hiring someone and what do you do in that circumstance and how far away is your employee that's going to go and, you know, rule the roost? Nick?
Tanner, that's why the language was in the original matrix. It was an effort to be more restrictive than what we had talked about, somebody being 30 minutes away, which from here could be New London, could be Stonington, could be Norwich. An hour away, it could be New Haven, could be Hartford, could be Providence. So logically, I said it ought to be somebody who's a no-act president, a full-time no-act president. And we may be creating a new business opportunity for people in the the district who would be willing to offer that service for a fee.
I agree. Good point. Others? Larry?
It occurred to me that a physical presence versus a virtual presence, we're in the virtual world here. So does that mean I can solve the problem within the 30 minutes? Or have to physically go to the property within 30 minutes? Those are two different things. What's the intent here?
I know how I feel, but let's see. You had that idea and a good idea with it too. And how do you feel about that?
Physical.
Yeah.
I don't think virtual is very effective. Witness the party in Lake of the Ozarks is over the holiday weekend asking people to exercise, social distance. You need somebody who's going to show up and make, make people behave if they're not.
This is, somebody once said to me, is, is your goal to get to Berlin or is your goal to defeat Hitler? And that's what this question sounds like. I would like the problem solved, but I don't believe it can be done by you know, getting any, you know, making a phone call. Well, if you could solve the problem by making a phone call, that would be easy, but I doubt that could happen. So it has to be someone who's as Nip says, in the neighborhood and willing and able and will go and solve the problem. If it turns out he can do it in 30 minutes with a phone call, I don't care because I'll never know because the person who offered the complaint will be satisfied. But I doubt remote solution to this kind of problem is, is very likely.
So the implication of that is, is that if I'm rent, if I'm doing a short-term rental, I can't go anywhere as long as somebody is renting my space more than 30 minutes away.
Yeah.
I just kind of think through that whole thing.
In the draft document, I changed the definition slightly to say plural, locally available secondary contacts. And when I wrote the definition out, it could be one or more because the onus is on the owner to have someone always available when he's got a rental party in there. And if his local contact went on vacation, that's him two weeks of the year. He has two choices. He has another person who's a locally available contact or he doesn't rent. Otherwise, he's in violation. How we prove that remains to be seen, but you have to have 100% certainty that somebody on call will be able to go there and solve the problem. And you can't have an owner saying, I'm sorry, but my guy wasn't around that weekend. You know, to me, that's a violation.
Fair, fair point. I just, then we need to crisp it up so it states that, that's all.
Well, you know, the bullets in the matrix are hard to say. I mean, I still, going back to this document out there that eventually we'll see the light of day and that a lot of these questions will either get resolved or you'll have a better way of doing it than I did it and that'll be even better. It'll be an improvement. So Lynn, were you waving your hand or were you?
You covered it.
Okay, all right. So others on the supervision, supervision thing. Supervision, coining new words now. Number of rental rooms. I I would, could I ask, Nick, could I was a little confused about this one. I understand parking spaces being allocated based on the number of bedrooms because there's a town record in the assessor's office that says how many legal bedrooms there are. So assigning parking spots based on bedrooms to me was not a problem. This one read to me like a parking space for the first two spaces. And I, I didn't know if you meant the first bedrooms instead of the first spaces. That one confused me, so I'm looking for clarification.
My language here came from a discussion we had in the basement of the firehouse when we were drafting the regs that were taken to the public hearing. And as I recall, and I may not recall it correctly, but my recollection is that we foresaw, particularly in the village, that there are fewer parking spaces per residence than there are bedrooms per residence. So we need to look at that relationship and recognize that the bedrooms available may exceed the number that can be justified by the number of parking places. And my, what I wrote down in the matrix was based on my recollection of where that discussion went. And Peter DiBiase drove it and basically made a decision how he thought it ought to come down. But the example is a house with five bedrooms that only has two parking spaces. If you don't create required relationship between the two of them, how are you going to rent? how are you going to rent all five rooms and not overwhelm the available parking spaces?
Okay, thank you. Now I understand it. Alright, who's vacuuming? I'm getting machine noise in my background.
It must be the nine o'clock alarm.
Yeah, could be. That's okay. We'll wait for it to go off at ten.
Be here for more than five more minutes.
Okay. Here's how I would propose addressing that comment, because now I understand it. Parking spots are limited. Houses could be large. And because of the way the neighborhoods are in the village district, it's only street parking, or it's not enough of a yard to cover that. I wrestled with this in the draft document and going back and, and I must have read the same thing you did based on last summer. I would approach it as, we give the CEO the authority to say, first of all, you say all parking is off-street. Okay, that's your first rule. And then you allocate spaces you can. And if you get to a point where there's not enough spaces on the property to be used for parking, then there's two things that I would suggest we could do. One of them would be tell the CEO that if a person says, I haven't got any spa, space on my property to park, have the CEO go out and confirm that. And if he does, that person on appeal effect to, to park on the street. But not everyone, just if the CEO makes a determination that guy's been in the house for years, but there's no place to park, he has to be on the street. That would be one way. The other would be, parking is non-conforming now anyway for a property. In other words, there's no yard parking available. The owner obviously has figured out some way to park and, over the years, and he may may get permission from a neighbor. He may park across the street in a, in an open area. Permission or not, I don't know. I would say that we should allow parking privilege for rental that is no different than what is allowed for the owner of a non-conforming property. That's just two ways to try and, and wrestle with it without being so restrictive as to say, you don't fit our one rule, number of spaces per number of bedrooms, so you can't do any rental. I mean, we could do that, but to me, that's pretty restrictive. If the owner has figured out where to park two cars and he's not gonna be there and he rents his house, those two, two same cars ought to be able to use what he uses, including if it's non-conforming uses that pre-exist. So just throw those out there. Lynn?
I, I am, I am really against doing that because, once again, you're getting then into a very subjective area. And you're dependent on that person that's saying, oh, I have this many cars and this is where I park. And, and, and then go and, you know, and telling the CEO that. And the CEO has to make a determination. And you're gonna hear complaints about fairness. Somebody got something that they didn't get, that's gonna bring it out big time about, you know, about favoritism. So I, I don't think that's a good idea. Either you're able to do it or you're not. In terms of, you know, treating everybody the same, up to a point, but we're talking about using your house as a business. The IRS calls this a business, it's a business. And, and so to keep, you know, bending over backwards to accommodate everything, I don't think it's a good idea. And if people disagree with me and they decide the CEO should do it, then you give them the parameters. Is it a narrow street? Is it crowded? And so then you might have someone who could do it during the winter, but not during the summer. But I mean, I would, I think rather than avoiding all that, which is getting down the weeds and details, just don't do it. Don't go there.
You will see the two things I described just now. You're gonna see them to read in the draft document once we get it up, posted for the public. And if you have that same view and it's shared, I, I'm open to suggestion on everything. That was the two ways I thought we could deal with this thing and try and treat conditions as they were yesterday as they are tomorrow. In other words, before and after the regulation. But I take your point. Maybe people want to be more restrictive with it and just say, no, if you can't park your car in the back of your house off the street, then you shouldn't be able to rent. I mean, we'll see. Pardon me?
To continuing this discussion at some point.
I'm sorry, it's so broken up. Say it again, please.
I'm signing off.
Oh, okay.
Continuing this discussion at some point.
Okay, good. Thanks for your input. I don't expect to go a whole lot longer, although we seem to almost have gotten on a roll here for a bit. And I would hope that you'll, on the parking thing, I, I hear Lynn's point, but I also wanted to read what's been written in the document and before we decide for sure. Let's do a couple more, uh, because they look like they're easy. Leave the parking thing aside for a minute. Adults per bedroom, do we all agree that, you know, in terms of to avoid the party house syndrome, it should be two adults per bedroom and even Ledgerd, I think, says two people over twelve years old. So they don't even go for a classic definition of adult. They, they include adolescents in there. Two being the, the applicable thing. Because I, I know of places in this neighborhood five years ago where, I mean, they had air mattresses laid out in the dining room. Many people in there, it was for a Coast Guard Academy graduation party and it was a real ruckus in the neighborhood for that whole weekend and, and the house was overloaded. But the way to resolve that is, you know, the Town of Groton tells you for each house how many bedrooms are authorized in the assessment record. So if we just say two people per bedroom, is that sufficient?
Two adults, two adults, you could put children in.
It says adults, two adults. I mean, again, the question of it.
That's eighteen usually.
Well, I, I said Ledgerd did over twelve. You could call it something different. I don't care what the number is. I don't want five people in there unless three of them are infants, you know, under five years old, let's say. And I think that was Ledgerd's point too. If it's a ten or eleven-year-old, maybe the parents aren't comfortable having them in their own room. So they pick twelve-year-old then over. No more than two per bedroom, legal bedroom. We'll leave that to ponder. Minimum major renter is twenty-five a good number? I mean, that's what car rental places use. I guess they figure that twenty-two-year-olds, they can't trust enough to rent a car. So they make, no, I'm, that happened when I, my son rented a car and that's what happened. He, he was twenty-three. And very mature and responsible, but not according to Avis. It could be twenty-five, could be twenty-one. I wouldn't suggest anything under twenty-one. Lynn?
I, I like twenty-five, but I would put it minimum age of the primary renter.
Well, I figure it's the person signing the contract. I, I see your point. In other words, other people can be less than twenty-five, but at least one of them has to be twenty-five. And that becomes a responsible adult in the room.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Any disagreement? Number of rentals per property at one time. I think that came about, you don't want to have two different groups renting in a house, even if it's a big house and it's set up, let's call it a duplex. Did we want to have two separate short-term rental parties in one house? I think that's why Nip captured that off the whiteboards and put it in that way. Do we agree that that's a good idea? Mary and then Lynn?
Yeah, I think that, that you got, these two are kind of a pair, number of rentals at one time, number of families. Because, you know, you and your sister, right, each to have a family. You're trying to keep it not a party house, but you have other categories above that to limit the number of adults. So I'm not, I, I think we gotta be a little careful that, that that there's a familiar relationship between the two, you know, the, the two contracts. That would be okay. Or you're forcing, I guess, the, one family member to take the contract for those couple of folks that might be there. So I'm kind, I think those two need to be looked at in, you know, collectively.
Sure, I understand. To me, they seem to be different things. You can't have two different rental parties. I honestly don't know how you prove families. You know, if one family is a father and husband, wife, two kids, and then his brother-in-law with different names and his wife and two kids. I don't know how we'd ever prove that.
Well, if, if one person signs the contract and they meet the other criteria, then I guess that'd be okay. Right?
Well, the, the first of those two is if there are two rental units in one property, you can't rent them both at the same time. The second row is even if there's only one rental unit in there, but it's a big unit. It's a five-person house. You can't have two families in that one house. So they are different things.
Well, it gets back to the point you just made, that how do you determine what a family is? So if you've got one.
That's what the intent of that was, I think.
Okay, that, that's what I was trying to struggle with, is, is if one person signs a contract and they're responsible for two rooms. You know, I don't know if they're family or not family or people's ma, you know, I don't, I don't know how to check that. But if all the other categories are correct, parking and all, all that other stuff, then do we care?
Well, are, are you saying that maybe we take out that number of families per rental thing and just leave the one that says number of rentals?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's one unit, one rental. And so it's one party. So it's one unit that's being rented to one party. And I agree, some, some of them I've seen like in, in Boulder, they have, they have a, a pretty complex one where they say, well, if you're in a more, the more dense neighborhood, it's one family, and that family can be grandparents, cousins, and then, you know, any, any kind of family relationship plus two other adults. And then in more, what would be more like outside the village would be like, and three other adults. I said, well, how do you know if they're family or not? And they said, they don't know. And if there are complaints, the people would be gone before we had it checked. So it's kind of a silly thing, you know, like, but it's just one party.
Well, let's take that.
Because if you and I, we're gonna, you know, if the two couples were gonna rent a house together and it said family, we're all of a sudden gonna be cousins, you know, silly.
So take out the family row?
Just a party. One, one, one unit, one party.
Events and parties. This, this matrix said not allowed. I would argue for something a bit more liberal. I would say, you know, if you have, let's say it's a four-bedroom house, but you, you've got eight of whatever you're calling your adults. Twelve years and up or eighteen years and up, but there's eight of those people. I would say for a party, no more than twice that. So that you can have sixteen people to a party. It's not gonna become a keg party with eighty people and parking down the street a mile. But I, I tell you, I, when my son got married five years ago, we rented a VRBO in in California. And were very interesting. Cell owners said, no. And the house we rented said, yeah, you can have some people in, but not big ones. So we rented that one because we wanted to invite our daughter-in-law's parents to dinner one night. And technically, that was a party under the guy with the new house who didn't want anybody other than the rental party in there. Oh, he could manage it? I don't know. But that was what his rule was, and I obey rules. So I didn't rent that house. I rented the other one. So I'm, that's why I'm saying this one to me is, you know, it's summertime. You want to have family members over. So you've got six people in the rental party and you want to have a party of twelve, that shouldn't be a huge imposition. So I, I would say maybe an option is to do twice the number of legal people in the contract. Does that resonate with people or is that too liberal? No, don't like it? I, I, speak, Lynn.
Oh, sorry, sorry. That's made me call on. No, I, I think that's kind of, you know, micromanaging a rule. And I think honestly, you know, it says no events or parties. It doesn't mean you can't have anybody else over. You couldn't have a quiet gathering, but I think it applies that don't be think of throwing a, throwing a big party. The other thing where I've rented before and I was talking, I think I talked to you about the fellow in Emporia, Kansas. He had a no events and parties. But then when there was a team there, a youth team, they said, could we gather and have a spaghetti dinner here and have it outside in the back patio? And he said, oh, sure, and I'll come over and help, you know, so they, it worked for them because, because he knew, he knew the people, they were gonna be okay. And then he got involved in it. So I don't think neighbors are gonna be complaining, you know, about something that's done in that way. But I think the rule is to be strict so that it's easier to enforce is important.
Everybody agree?
Can we go back to the all muted? Because I can, I can't hear somebody.
Yeah, I know. I know, that, that's driving me nuts too. Okay, I'm gonna mute everybody. Except, and I'll just keep an eye out for the speaker. I think we're almost done anyway, but just get as many of these as we can. Okay, Dana?
So I, I'm not.
Wait a minute. I'm sorry, go ahead again now, Dana.
Yeah, I'm not sure what Lynn was suggesting or not suggesting, but we oughta make sure we get this right. Because this, this was one of the major priorities that, that started this whole thing down the track that we're going. So let's be very careful about how we define events and parties and, and how we're gonna do this. I, I can't wrap my head around it right now. I'm getting really tired.
Yeah. Okay, so that's gonna look for a, a clear definition. What would you like it to be? Just in general terms, do you want it to be the rental party only and no other people can come in? Because if you have a cranky neighbor and they make a call, that's what, if our rule says you can't have an event and they say, well, they had two more cars were the people, it was four more people, and they made a little bit of noise. But, you know, it's, wha, what do you, what do you think it ought to be? And then we'll figure out how to say it.
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I've seen some verbiage elsewhere, which I kind of liked, and I, I can't pull it up right now off the top of my head.
Okay, alright, we'll leave that to another day. We are all kind of winding down. Let me ask you a question here. We did finally get a bit on a roll there, and I think that's good. I'm also doing some calendar management and, and I, let me lay out a, a pathway that I think would, it'd be useful to talk about. And this is kind of consistent with what Blake had said earlier about the value of Zoom versus the value of face-to-face. I think there's gonna come a time. I think there's going to come a time late in the summer sometime ideally. Where we're going to have a public meeting that is not a public hearing. A lot of water has gone over this dam. I already know from the letters I've gotten and I forwarded to you that people are getting cranky again. And last summer, they got into the mode of appreciating that we were really listening to them and. They're going to have to understand, you know, we're doing our business now to try and figure out what a proposal ought to have in it. But rather than come up with what we think is the best proposal we can and going out to public hearing and not having much opportunity to change it after the hearing. I think we would benefit from having a public meeting ahead of time. That's a workshop. Treat it like a public hearing, let people tell us what they think and most of them are going to probably say. You guys are insane, you, you went off the rails and, and you just roll with it. You accept the fact that you're going to get a lot of comments that way. But you also might get some good suggestions, which we could then. Make our product better. So I, I'm hoping we can get some value out of that. And then have, you know, draft this up as an ordinance and then go to public hearing for it. I'm trying to hit a window of August and September to do that because that's probably the best time turn, in terms of coronavirus. We get into October and I think second wave, if it happens like the medical professionals think it will. We're going to start being buttoned down again and we're not going to want to have a public hearing or we're not going to be allowed to have one. So I'd like to have a. A public meeting in maybe early mid-August. And a public hearing sometime mid-September to late September. And in order to do that, because then those two meetings could be face-to-face. And that's why I'm picking that window because we wouldn't have to necessarily use Zoom to do it. And I think that's important when you have a public hearing and somebody is going to come up and stand in front of you and tell them, tell you what they think. So that's why I'm thinking this way and my proposal is. That we need more time still than we're allocating to ourselves by doing something every two or three weeks for a couple of hours. I would suggest that we need to set a calendar that says once a week for a couple of hours a week. We just, every Tuesday or every Thursday, whatever it is, until we get the job done. And that's going to give us. You know, six to eight meetings by the end of July. And I know that's asking a lot of volunteers and two of you work for a living and that's a bigger deal and. But I think in order to get this thing done before it, it gets us into the cold, dark winter and we have that problem again. That, you know, we need to, to pack the front end of this with a lot of development time. We, if, if we don't need it all, that's great, then we can accelerate our schedule and have a meeting in July and a hearing in August. But. I'd hate to get to November and have us still trying to figure out what we want to have it say because we'll lose a year that way. It'll, it'll go by the boards. By the way, I've, Nip's on, on, you know, one of his big concerns as I go away in the winter, probably not this year. Because if coronavirus does what it does, we're going to be back in Zoom meetings and I'm not going to be in Florida. So. I still think it's better to get this thing done sooner rather than later, and that means public meetings, August, September. So long-winded, sorry. What do you think of that? Yeah, and then Dana. Beth?
I'm willing to do it, but it can't go beyond nine because I just lose focus after that. I'm, you know, doing whatever I'm doing all day. By nine o'clock, I'm done. So that, I'm willing to do the once a week, but I'm not willing to go beyond.
Okay, fair enough. Dana?
Once a week is a lot. It's, it's just a lot to ask. And I'm retired. And I know that Beth and Blake are working and especially during the summertime. I, I just think it's, it's crazy to ask us to do that.
Are you concerned that? We get into the fall and winter and we're still, you know, every three weeks or four weeks. On that type of schedule, we're. You know, not getting it done.
I think, I think the reason we may not get it done in the, in the short term or the long term is. We're, we're not willing to discuss the things that we need to discuss, which is what the definitions are and what Nip was getting at. Originally by defining what exactly it is we want to do. And then, and then going from there. I just. I can't put it in words. I just think that we're procrastinating and still not making the decisions that we need to make in order to make this thing go through. And I don't. I don't think devoting more time to it is going to change that.
Okay, that's one and one. Actually, two and one if you count me. Blake, Lynn, Larry?
Once a week is too much.
Okay. Okay, so every two weeks? No later than nine? Larry?
Okay. No, I, I'm okay with once every two weeks, no later than nine. But Mondays and Tuesdays, because they got other. Town conflict, town meeting conflicts.
So Wednesday or Thursday really, unless people want to tie up a Friday and, you know, I'd be surprised. Yeah. Although the seahorse closed, you know, there's really nothing annoying to do on Friday nights anymore.
I, I don't know. Does anybody know what day it is anymore?
Well. We could just pick Tuesday anyway, and that means once in a while Larry wouldn't be available. That's one way of doing it brutal, or Monday. Or Wednesday, Thursday. So I'll make whatever day you want available. From my perspective, so Lynn?
Better try to get everybody there because then we don't have to swing around again. And bring somebody up to date. So I, I think trying to do it on a Wednesday or Thursday where Larry can be here makes, makes more sense. And I, and I know that it's, that it's meeting more often is intense. I don't relish the thought of it. But I do think that we lose steam between meetings, you know.
Yeah.
Don't stay focused. So I think that's important. In terms of, you know, going for a, a meeting that the community could attend. You know, that's a laudable goal. I'm not sure it works. I mean, I'm in the medically vulnerable population and I think a lot of the people who would come. To want to come to a workshop and speak would be also. So it still may be eliminating a lot of the population.
Yeah, that's a fair point, but we don't know what August is going to hold for us. I'm optimistic that maybe it won't be bad until the fall progresses. If, if it stays bad in the summer, we get a second wave early, then yeah, we're limited to Zoom or. So. That's the option.
My physicians right now say I cannot do things like that, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. And, and I actually, I would also. I admire or I appreciate Larry's input, but no more so than having to run this thing tonight when he wasn't there to. To do it intelligently. So having said that. If we try and only have meetings when everybody says they're going to be there. That'll be a problem. It, it almost. It almost makes it impossible with people's other schedules and that's why we have alternates. I would say we should pick our dates and get as many as we can, and if we can't get a quorum, then we won't meet. But I would rather have three commissioners and two alternates bat ideas around knowing that. Everything is. Subject to a revisitation until we vote to take something for public view. Yeah, that means we may go back over broken ground once in a while, but. If we only have meetings when everybody can be there, we'll have very few meetings and we'll have a lot of work to do. So that's my view on that one point. So Wednesday or Thursday? Thursday? How's Thursday? Okay, not this week, but Thursday. Two weeks from now on Thursday. Thursdays. Okay. I'll put a schedule up for everyone, but I just want to make sure I get it down and remember it myself. Seven to nine, okay.
I just have to say there's a Board of Appeals meeting that night at seven.
On the 11th, yeah, that's probably not picking Tuesdays because Tuesdays usually people are free for zoning, but actually not. Because it's only one meeting and you know what it is. Yeah, we'd either have to draft Christine or take our, fortunately, this thing provides a literal record. And I, I've, each meeting we've done, I've gone back and listened to the whole thing on fast speed. Just to fill in my notes. So maybe we would do it some night and you wouldn't be there, so.
You could do that.
Yeah, okay. I want to look, I had a whole list of things I had to do here. We postponed that, we did solo. That appears to be everything I had. Does anybody else have anything they want to add? Anybody want to offer a motion to adjourn? Yeah. Somebody doesn't second. I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Appreciate the effort. Larry, do I stop the recording because I started it?